We'll start off tonight with prayer and pledge. For those who would like to participate, please do so. Can we bow our head? Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking you for strength, guidance, and direction. Direct us in the right path. Give us the right understanding of what we are to do and how to do it, Father. We ask therefore all of the ones who have lost loved ones over the past week, two weeks since we last convened, we ask that you comfort them in their time of sorrow. We also ask that you please watch over all of the employees and the citizens of this great city. Father, we ask these things in the mighty name of Jesus, and they all said, "Amen."[51.12][51.13][Music]
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia. Present. Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bowles is absent. Mayor Protam Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present. Do we have any announcements?
Yes, the city convenience station will be open this Saturday, March 9th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. City residents can drop off items not picked up at the curb or other miscellaneous bulky items that takes us to public input.[115.67][115.68][Music]
Okay, we are now at public input. You will be called to the podium by our city clerk. You have three minutes. Please get to your point that you need to get to. If you get close to the three minutes, I'll be asking you to wrap up. Let's do a little housekeeping first, I'm sorry. Councilpersons, please turn your phones on silent or off. Same thing with your computers. Audience, if you can do that, I sure would appreciate it because there's nothing worse than a phone going off in the middle of a conversation. Madam Clerk, who do we have first?
Our first speaker is Melanie Velasco. Counsel, you have a handout from Ms. Velasco.
I'm still very emotional. Thank you, counsel. My name is Melanie Velasco, and I live at 908 Court Street, Cossip Ridge, down the Lack of city inspection. I have not had hot water in eight months. Red bugs, now cockroaches. Okay, y'all got this? My happiness is not here. Look at all this where it says here, "The pursuit of happiness." Does it say you live in a roach-infested building? You live without hot water for eight months and the landlord is not fixing it? No, it doesn't say that. It says here. Well, let me not read it all because y'all can read. I know I can read, but I'm just quite emotional. But the main thing I'm trying to say is among these rites is life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Okay, and then it says that I have rights to live civilized without this kind of abuse. Now, help me, please. Okay, then I have this concern for Saginaw. I think we need little homes because homeless are out at the rescue mission and they could have germs and spreading it to everybody in whatever room they are in. They need little homes, homes of their own, okay? Then we're lacking places for young people to go, maybe like an after-school program until their parents are home, under supervision of parents, family, cousins, whatever. My other concern is bad roads. Saginaw's got so many dang, excuse me, bad roads. And, well, let me get back to my problem. Can y'all help me? Scott's supposed to be my inspector. He's nowhere in sight. I guess he's tried to call me, but I don't hear him. I don't know. But I cannot hear anybody knocking at my door because I have a briefway sort of to my, which is the reason why I liked it because I've been a victim of domestic violence and I like one door, the main door, another door, and then another door. I feel safe. But I'm not happy at all, and my safety is not protected, and I have no happiness at all, except for my loving sweet cats. Could you help me? When Scott coming to condemn 908 Court Street? That's what I want to know.
Okay, Ms. Velasco.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
It has been referred to the department. We're waiting on some answers. We do have some answers. So look to hear from Scott or that department really soon.
Hot water?
A lot of stuff that you're asking for. Scott and then will tell you what we can do and what we can't do.
I'm gonna go another month without hot water?
Ms. Velasco.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Bowles.[389.43][389.44][Music]
Greetings, Madam Mayor, council, city staff. From Detroit to Saginaw to Iron Mountain, citizens can tell you about the importance of access to safe, affordable water. During the first year of the pandemic, there were 300,000 Michigan households behind on their water bills. Michigan utilized LIWAP funding to collect statewide data for the first time. In 2020, in a Republican legislature, we passed bipartisan legislation for temporary, to temporarily prohibit water shut-offs. Average inflation-adjusted water costs have increased by 188% across Michigan since 1980. Every corner of this state has people who have trouble paying their water bills. Access to clean, affordable water is important for public health. Every human being needs access to water, and it should not depend on how much money you have or where you live. Detroit and Gleywau, for instance, have tried to address the unaffordability of water bills by creating a Lifeline program and RAP. These programs help low-income households with their water bills and plumbing repairs. Here's the bad news. Neither Lifeline nor RAP have sustainable long-term funding. Also, Michigans elsewhere in the state are struggling with unaffordable water bills, including right here in Saginaw. Many do not have water, I'm sorry, many do not have access to water affordability programs. We should be unwilling to let anybody have their quality of life, public health, and financial security put in jeopardy because of unaffordable water bills. The good news, along with our colleagues, us with Saginaw CAP have helped to introduce statewide water affordability legislation that includes a program at the state that preserves flexibility for water providers to maintain or start their own program, a sustainable and reasonable funding mechanism, and water shut-off protections. Our bills would result in households receiving water bills they can afford. The concept of a statewide water affordability program has the support of 70% of Michiganders. This legislation would call for a reasonable $2 per month for water affordability. For low-income residents, they would not see an increase in their water bills. They would instead be eligible for the Low-Income Water Residential Affordability Program, which would give them a lower water bill. I'm here to ask our mayor and staff to join other mayors like Detroit Mayor Mike Duggan, Mayor Christopher Taylor in Ann Arbor, and others to sign the petition that we sent to you all in supporting this water affordability legislation. Water is life. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Turner.
Good evening, honorable council members. Thank you for letting me address you tonight. My name is Matthew Turner. I am the community resource social worker at the Hoyt Library, working with the public libraries of Saginaw, and I have addressed you in the past, and I would like to just give you an update of some projects because we're thinking that the Hoyt Library is acting as a nexus within the community, providing resources to community members, particularly marginalized community members. Recently, Great Lakes Bay Pride, they have shifted their LGBTQIA+ peer support group to the Hoyt, where we're hosting it, and I am now leading that group. And it's amazing, there is such a lack of resources for that population. We have people driving in from Merrill to attend this peer support group, families who are left without any services or support for their LGBTQIA+ children or relatives. So this is just such a valuable and important thing. Research shows that LGBTQIA+ community members are far more likely to attempt or commit suicide, are far more prone to domestic violence, and are far more prone to mental health issues. And we have a very, very low amount of support for that population within our community. So I wanted to update you on that. It's an exciting program, and we're looking to expand it at the Hoyt Library as well. Also at the Hoyt Library, on March 25th, the Great Lakes Bay Health will be having their mobile dental unit at the parking lot across the street from the Hoyt. That's something that has been arranged through my position and partnering with Great Lakes Bay Health. That's going to be a great resource. I'm currently in negotiations with the mobile medical unit out of CMU, and we're looking at April for them also to be setting up in the parking lot across from the Hoyt Library, providing healthcare screening, products, over-the-counter drugs. Another program that is going to be going on is at the Zoll Library, I will be facilitating a free parenting program. I did this last, oh, it was two months ago, and had a great turnout, and it's a fantastic resource for parents that walk out of a three-hour workshop with strategies and tools to use with their children immediately. So we're excited about that. Another big thing that's going on is I'm looking at doing voter registration for the unhoused population that are frequent visitors to the Hoyt. I have gotten information from the state of Michigan on how to register people who do not have permanent residence or permanent addresses, and I am going to be embarking on meeting with people and hopefully getting more people registered to vote, particularly prior to the upcoming millage. The library's not on the millage, but it's a great way to involve the patrons in an area in supporting the Hoyt. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Audrey Beatty. Ms. Beatty? That takes us to remarks of council.
Tonight, we start with Councilman Ostash, three minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everybody, to the chamber, coming out on this beautiful night. The weather is absolutely gorgeous out there. First, I want to thank the residents of the city of Saginaw for passing the public safety millage. It passed with 68%, so I was pretty excited to see that the next day because that does retain our 20 police officers and 10 firefighters in that position, in that millage. I also want to, March is also reading month, and I want to thank Jeanne Kwalski, the principal of Chester Miller Elementary School. She invited me to come out and read to the students today, so it was my first time ever doing it. I had a great time. I'd love to come back and do it again. I had second graders, so if people that are parents, well, you'll know the kind of the questions I was getting from these kids. So it was a lot of fun, really a great day, I'd say. Also, too, here in the city of Saginaw, the police department is retiring one of our Canines. So Canine Denver will be retiring, and he'll be with its permanent owner, Officer Ward. So thanks for all your service. And also, I want to thank the Eastside Soup Kitchen. I was invited to come out to the Eastside Soup Kitchen and get a complete tour of the facility, hoping to get in there and do also some volunteering. Also, they are a wonderful place to take donations, so if you're looking for toiletries or clothing, they do have an area there to help serve the residents that are coming into the soup kitchen and hidden harvest. The facility is absolutely amazing. I've never been there before. I was glad I went. It's just, it's amazing, the program that runs through there with food collection and distribution. So hats off, thanks for everything that you're doing there for Diane Keenan and your staff. Police Department is also looking for front porch roll calls again this year, so if you're looking to host, just get ahold of Brittany Jeffers at our Saginaw Police Department at 759-1260. And to address some of our public speakers, Matt, thanks for coming out and talking about the public library, which is in my neighborhood in the Cathedral District. You're right, there's a lot of services that they do provide. It's a great place and a great space. You did bring up a Great Lakes Bay Pride, of which I'm on the board of directors for that event, that organization, and that is a wonderful program that they put on. I have attended, and what I did realize when I was there is that there's a lot of folks that are just trying to find somebody to, that has some commonality within that community. So it does provide a lot of support for those folks to get together and talk. So that's all I really have. Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next, we have Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. I want to give a birthday shout-out to my niece, Leamara Riley. She turned three today. And then my baby girl, she'll be 23, March 9th, so she's making me old. So some community events, and like I always say, we are moving forward. Saginaw has a lot of great events for our youth, our elderly, and everybody in between. Saturday, March 9th, from 9:00 to 11:30, they're going to have Books for Breakfast down at 940 East Genesee Hunger Solutions Center, and they'll be serving pancakes about 11:15. They're going to be all-you-can-eat for $3 a person, so play your price. Free new book for every child. They're going to have storytelling and things like that going on. Don't forget to utilize every Saturday. Old Town has their food giveaways, starting at 10:00. It's a great resource in our community. I see so many people out there early in line, and they give really good food out. I've volunteered there plenty of times. It's been a while. So, and then tomorrow, they're having a community lunch and learn that I'll be attending at the Great Lakes Bay Health Center, and these are pretty nice that they put on, just about health issues that you might have going on, like diabetes and that. So they're just kind of interesting, just to learn and stuff like that. And then also, every Tuesday, New Beginnings Ministry, they have their food giveaway starting at 3:00, so if you know anybody on the South Side. And of course, we'll be having all the Easter activities coming up that I'll talk about at our next council meeting on the 18th. But I believe that's all I have for you guys. And just Eric Mays and his family, may you rest in peace. He was a great servant, I know from the little time that I know about him, and he just was trying to do like us, his civil duty to the community. So just want to say, you know, rest in peace to Eric Mays. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just on the heels of Councilwoman Garcia, I had met Councilman Mays one time when I was doing opera funds for essential workers over in Flint, and I talked with him briefly about being on council, and he said, "Just keep going." So yeah, it's a great loss to the city of Flint for him. Just real quick, for the public speakers, Mr. Turner, thank you for bringing up the fact that you could register homeless folks to vote. There's no law in the state of Michigan that says that you have to have an actual address to be able to vote. It's a very, probably more powerful expression of somebody's voice if they don't have any place to go, but still want to be able to vote any way they want to vote. So that's very important, especially for Hoyt. I remember Hoyt had done a news, what's like the best way to put it, profile in 2009 about the amount of homeless that kind of come there every day and use the internet and stay there. Sadly, with the homeless study that we've had in the city of Saginaw, there's zero people that are homeless. I don't believe that. I think there are more people that are homeless. We just not had highlighted that and not had reached out to necessary people. So thank you for highlighting that. And then also, I think, oh, a shout-out, taking another page from Councilwoman Garcia, my neighbor Zoe Belvin had turned eight, so congratulations to her. Beautiful young lady. A bunch of people have probably seen me around with her. I've known her since before she was, she was in her mother's tummy. So Zoe, happy birthday to you this past weekend. And then if anybody has any information, Keyshawn Banks, Kwan Lee, Quay Smithers, Mario Bulger, Pamela Whitson, Ryan Clemmons, Rory Whitson, Cortez Hampton, Mazzy Reddison, Johnson, Lamar Van, Ronald Keychon, and Mr. Stevens, please call 1-800-422-5245. That's Crime Stoppers. These are all the folks that have been murdered in the last year and a half in our city. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to our public speakers. Happy Women's History Month. It's that time of year, what is it? Shakka Khan has a song, "I'm Everyone," well, I can't say that, but she's every woman. It's all of her. All right. But also, I do want to share this week, this weekend, I had the pleasure of sitting on a panel for Jack and Jill, talking about legislative and getting young people in high school engaged in public work. And one of the things that I talked about and shared with them was the abundant mindset. In this past week, I had a chance to sit in with a session with, is Tina here? Oh, I saw Tina. Tina Swanton with the Food Club and STARS, Glenn and Jamie, and they're working on some major projects to bring some additional funding to the city, and that's been my mind all week, an abundant mindset, making sure that the moments of doubt are kind of cast aside and say, "Nope, abundance is ours. Abundance is ours. We have to relieve it. We have to receive it." And so I'm really thankful to see that our young people are thinking like that, thinking about the future, making sure that resources are going to be plentiful in Saginaw. And as I close out, as my colleagues have said, this week has probably been a very emotional time for our community, the loss, the violence. But I want to send my condolences to the family of Eugene Sonny Moten, as I was talking about my grandfather with Mayor Moore just earlier. And Sonny Moten was like an uncle to me, who took care of my grandfather when, he took, helped us take care of my grandfather. Just is a reminder that life really moves swiftly, and please make sure that you tell those you love. Send my condolences to my colleague, Councilman Williams, and the loss of his father, such a great man in our community, as well as in our national church, in my reformation, and in my colleagues in Flint, and also my colleagues in Franklemuth, and the loss of Mayor Mary Ann Ackerman. I do want to share, I have worked with Mary Ann outside of municipal government. She literally was my suite mate. And after every meeting, I knew that I was going to be quizzed on what I learned because she went to make sure, did you listen to your constituents? Did you make an opportunity to hear them? And I was working on a project, I'm currently working on this project, because she saw my passion for education, and she gave me some opportunities that I don't even know how I lucked up to get them. But it was through her care and her passion for her community and investing in the next generation that I've been able to partake in some of the trainings, one being storytelling. And if you know Mary Ann, she knew how to tell a story, and she'd build those stories. So my heart is with all of my colleagues, and just again, please make sure you tell those that you know you love them and that you care. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to say thank you all for coming and being part of your city council meeting this evening. Definitely appreciate it, doesn't go unnoticed, because you could have been a lot of places, but you decided to come here with us today and see your city council at work. I'd like to say thank you to all the speakers. I'd like to say to Mr. Bowles, I also was reading that information, and hopefully Saginaw won't be left out, and we, everyone should be able to afford affordable water. And to Ms. Melanie, I don't, I think she left, but I'm just wondering if she got the communication, the copy of the letters, because Saginaw City has sent out letters to whomever the owners of that property is, and I guess they just haven't gotten a response back yet. So the city, certain things take time, and you have to do certain procedures. So those procedures are in place, and the city of Saginaw is working on the young lady's information. So they are working on your information. Last letter was about a week ago, so it's up to the owners to heed to the information that the city sends to them. Also, in regards to little houses, I'm an advocate for that, and hopefully we can have a conversation one day in regards to the little houses, small houses, et cetera. And I also like to send my condolences to, first of all, our own city councilman, Mr. Reggie Williams, and also the family of Councilman Mays in Flint. That's definitely a loss. And that's all I have to say right now. Wait till later. No, I'm just playing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to our public speakers for coming out. On a personal note, I want to say congratulations first to my youngest son, Isaiah Michael Williams, sailor Isaiah Michael Williams. He graduated from the Naval Academy and is now in Class A school, and I'm very proud of him, extremely proud of him. It was a move he made on his own. Daddy didn't have to push him, but daddy sure glad he made that move. And then two days later, I found out that my father passed, and I appreciate the condolences. And I just want to say to everyone that is listening, during these times of mourning and grief, it's a beautiful thing when you're getting what you give. And the way the Saginaw community and the people around Michigan and around the United States have reached out in support, it's hard to say what it would be like without that. So I am so grateful to all of you who have reached out and shown your concern to myself and my family. It's greatly appreciated, and I don't, I don't know how to thank you other than continuing my family's legacy, which is to assist, to help, and be there for our community. Thank you.
I don't know what to say behind that. Thank you. Next, we have, wait, I want to make sure, because I always leave somebody out, Mayor Protam Bench.
Thank you. My condolences to you, Reggie, not to belabor that, but you get what you give. You're absolutely right, and I imagine that there's a lot of love coming back to you that's well-deserved. But to our public speakers, thank you very much for being here. To Ms. Velasco, I think the main issue right now is that code enforcement has to connect with you to get into your premises to make sure that they can inspect. So just make sure that you are making yourself available and communicating with the city staff so they can come in and do their job and do the best, you know, that they can to help you with your situation. To Mr. Bowles, thank you for being here. I certainly appreciate that the state legislature is seizing on the momentum and not ignoring what became so obvious to us during the pandemic that people cannot afford water, and that creates health issues in and of itself separate from a pandemic. I will say that I do have some questions about how it would work. I did read through the legislation and probably just need somebody to explain it to me, or at least sit down and answer some questions for me. I know I've talked to Ms. Nye, of course, and expressed some of my questions to her, and hopefully she'll get back to me. But we do appreciate that they're thinking of our citizens and our most vulnerable citizens at that, so I'm very happy with, to hear that. But I want to congratulate our clerk or thank her. I don't think it's your first election as clerk, but not the first election, certainly. But I just wanted to commend our clerk and her staff. The elections are only going to get more intense as they go on out with participation, hopefully, but we had a really good election day, I think, and I just appreciate everybody that volunteers to work that day. I appreciate how thorough the training is from our clerk's office. And we have a primary in August and a general election in November, and while we have a good pool of volunteers who come in and work and are regular, we are always looking for more people to come in and spend their day with us, making sure that everybody gets to exercise their right to vote. And real quick to Mr. Turner, I just appreciate what you're doing in your role over at Hoyt Library. It is a huge asset, and I have no doubt that you are reaching a lot of people who would be otherwise underserved if you hadn't been, weren't there doing that work. I'm very happy to hear that the LGBT peer support group has been moved there because there are so many people who can access it now that I don't think would have been able to otherwise. But please feel free to reach out to me. I have done some voter registration within the unhoused community, and it was something that was eye-opening and very rewarding, and certainly something that we ought to be doing regularly. So if there's something I can do to help with that, I would absolutely love to be a part of that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess it's my turn, huh? Public speakers, thank you so much. I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying. Mr. Bowles got some questions, plan to call you with some concerns. I need for all of us to start looking at cities that are comparable to Saginaw. I need for all of us to start looking at cities that are comparable to Saginaw. We can't go off to Richter and try to put Saginaw into Detroit because we'd get swallowed. We can't put ourselves into Ann Arbor because we got to do it two or three times. So when I get people and they say, I'm glad when people challenge and say, okay, you need to do, but I also need to do my research. I don't just jump because people say jump. I do all of my homework. So I have some concerns with some stuff with that bill. We'll talk about it and we can have our open debate discussion. And for Ms. Velasco, I don't know if she left. Okay. I think that, she comes, I guess, we're the, we're the site where everybody comes for help. Because some stuff that comes in front of us is out of our control. And if you don't cooperate with our staff, then they can't get in here to do anything that they're supposed to do. And it's not really, then I hear people say, well, y'all ain't doing your job. Yes, we are. We cannot kick your door down. If we calling, trying to make contact and you're not available, nothing, no disrespect, we go to the next person. Makes sense, don't it? So anytime anybody has any concerns, you know, which we could put down in the hallway, what is it, where people have questions, their concerns, a concern box. Because some of the stuff, when I talk to people, I try not to be mean, because I don't like to be mean. And I try to tell them, okay, let's walk through the process. Understand, this whole thing with all of us up here is a process. We can't jump just to be jumping. We have to sometimes, not sometimes, I research everything people tell me. You tell me about a bill, I'm right on it. You tell me about other mayors, they'll tell you I called. Tell me the pros, tell me the cons. So when I think about Saginaw, I put us first. I don't want to be like Detroit, Grand Rapids, Ypsilanti, Ann Arbor. I want to be Saginaw. Saginaw awesome. With that, Madam Clerk, what's next?
Reports from the manager.
I don't know why you do that. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I do want to say, great job by our city clerk, Chris Bowlesman, and the staff and all the election workers on the election last week. And thank you, as Councilman Ostag said, to the public for voting for the Public Safety Millage, two thirds yes vote. That's a good outcome for us. And it was interesting to see the numbers. So the highest number of voters voted absentee vote appeared from the numbers. And the second was in person at the precinct. And the early voting center was, was a third. So most of you probably did see, I did send the press release from the state of Michigan and Corning. So Corning is going to invest close to a billion dollars in Saginaw County in a new manufacturing facility. There's going to be, I think the press release said 1,100 jobs. I spoke with them, there's probably going to be more than that. So.
Eight thousand.
Probably 1,300, I think he said.
He said the number was growing.
We'll have, I've met with them a few times and they are going to be working in, in the city and in the region, but they're interested in transportation and helping people get to work because that's a high number of employees to draw out there. In that area, then, there's going to be over 2,500 employees. So it's incumbent upon us to help get that word out and make sure there is transportation of that site so our residents can get out there and work. And you'll see more from that on the coming meetings. Our other big project that we're working on in the city with the Memorial Cup, it's coming up faster than you think. The games are from May 24th to June 2nd. And it's worth mentioning again, this is the first time that this tournament has been in the United States since 1998. It's the first time ever in the state of Michigan. So we're going to be at the center of an international audience. So take that opportunity to, to go to the events and show off Saginaw. I do want to mention this again as well, the SEDC did create a Memorial Cup Small Business Lending Program. The purpose of that is to help small businesses prepare for this influx of potential customers. You can use that for inventory or to prepare your business. I think it's up to $5,000. So if you have a small business in Saginaw, you should check that out. And I mentioned at the last meeting, I want to mention it again. When early summer gets here, we do want to review all the organizations, ARPA funding to make sure that everyone is progressing, knows the timelines that we have for the purchase orders by the end of the year. And council members, if you are out talking to those individuals or organizations who did get funding, make sure to bring that up with them and, hey, where, how are you, how's your project progressing? Are you getting the purchase orders? I do that when I talk to them, just to make sure that they, they're all aware of those timelines and that they, they don't miss out on, on the money that they've been allocated. And finally, don't forget our next meeting is Student Government Day. So we're going to have, I think we have at least two or three schools signed up already, but we'll have the morning planned out for them. And then our city council meeting is at noon that day.
You forgot to talk about the parade on the 23rd.
We can talk about it, Mayor.
You know, you're supposed to talk about the parade. At the memorial, there's supposed to be a veterans' parade down, what did they say, 75?
Yes. They said it's approved by MDOT to go down 75 and 675.
Yep.
I haven't seen the confirmation and, but we'll assume that they did get approval for that. That's the parade where the Memorial Cup is brought into the city. So it will come down 13 and it'll be televised at the Jolt Event Park. So we're hoping to have a lot of people down there. I'm sure there will be. Most of the events at, at Jolt, the pregame, are going to be free. So that's something that even if you don't like hockey, you don't want to buy the tickets, you can go down there and check that stuff out. And they, and they will be showing the games at the event park as well on the big screens is what, what I'm told. So take an opportunity to do that. We mentioned before the STARS line, the Saginaw DDA has worked with STARS. So there will be a bus line that goes from the Dow through downtown to Old Town with several stops. That'll be free for anybody to take. So you could park anywhere in that area. Don't have to try to park in the ramp or something like that. And hopefully, I go to some of those businesses throughout the DDA. So that's a, a good partnership with STARS.
See, I told you, he has some more to talk about. I know he did. Councilman Copeland.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. And I'm glad you're talking about that because hearing, are we going to warn the citizens about the planes that are going to be flying over the community and the jets that will be flying through Saginaw?
Well, I had just heard of the flyover. So it seems to be growing as.
Every day.
Every day.
Every time we go to a meeting.
Yeah.
So I'm new to it.
And I appreciate you for that. And so, congratulations to you and city staff on your award from Saginaw Future for the work that you all are doing, supporting small business. The second question I had was, with Corning coming into the community, will we see development on training prior to the actual facility development? But we will have some organizations here within the community that will do pre-training so they can be prepared to hit the ground running?
Yeah, so I, I'm not aware of what, all the types of positions that will be available there. I asked them if they could come in and talk to council members so you have a better idea about what, what jobs there will be and their timeline. And they agreed to do that. So we're going to try to set up some of those meetings for you all to talk to them from, so they're an upstate New York company. And if you go and look at their, they seem to be a very good corporate citizen. They're working in some of their communities with improving healthcare, setting up federally, federally approved healthcare centers. So they have a track record for that type of activity. So I, I do believe them when they say that they're planning to do some of that stuff here. So I think we'll give you that opportunity to talk to them and have some of those questions answered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Yes, back to the, the SEDC funds for small businesses. Just heard little conversations back and forth in regards to that. I'm wondering, the $5,000 cap, is there other monies that small businesses can tap into from the city in regards to the Memorial Cup?
We don't have anything specific to the Memorial Cup other than that, but there, the SEDC does have loan funds available for small businesses year round. So if there was some kind of expansion or something like that, they could definitely talk to SEDC about that, too.
Okay. And so, the $5,000 is the cap. That's, so the small business needed maybe a few thousand dollars more. Is that feasible, is a possibility?
With regards to the SEDC Memorial Cup, we set it at the $5,000 based on our available funding. So we have allocated those dollars just for 5,000, just for the, that, there's no more.
Okay. And have you guys been getting information, applications back yet?
Yes, we have received applications that will be going to the board this March. It's a few right now. We're about to do like a media blitz on letting everyone know about the Memorial Cup. We're about to send out application packets, QR codes to all the small businesses here in the city to make them aware that this is occurring, that we're here to help, and that the money can go towards inventory and equipment.
Okay. Also, I wanted to know, in regards to the opioid dollars, have you all mad, where is that going right now?
Well, I think there's a varied number of projects. So I'd ask Lori to update us. She's kind of coordinating that for us.
Here, we're still working with the county on an overall plan for countywide, but the vending machine is going to be placed at Hoyt soon. And then I think we're looking at some training for public safety for response to opioid, like medical.
Are those meetings open? When are those meetings that you meet with the county?
It's, I invite only. It's a panel countywide, but you could contact the director.
Who, and who's that?
I'm drawing a blank.
Chris Harrington.
Yes, please, thank you.
Chris Harrington is the health director of the county health department.
Yeah, they organize the pay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to make a statement and then a question. With, in regards to water, I know this is something that this council has been talking about for some time. I, I travel a lot, so I've been in Ann Arbor sadly for the last week doing a campaign there at U of M. They have, they have not as adequate water as we have. I was in Canton, Ohio, a couple of days before that with Zoe and Jada and Elliot. They don't have as adequate water. I do agree with the mayor that we are not comparable to any other community. We have the best water with the best ability to deliver water. The amount of people that we deliver it to is enormous. What I think is going to be Saginaw's legacy is going to be for the next 100, 200 years, how we delivered that water and who we delivered it to. And especially the way that we deliver it to our citizens. Something that we talked about before is, you know, decreasing the amount of penalty fees for our citizens. It's the highest in the state. I'd like to revisit that at some point in time. But when folks bring up issues like looking at other bills, when we know Michigan is going to be the place where people are going to migrate towards, whenever there's some type of climate, you know, devastating climate issue where there's the receding of the coastal lines or whatever, we, we want to be prepared for that and we also want to set a precedent for that. My question is, we had originally a report that we were given in 2020 for, it was a big, thick book water report. When is the next one?
Do you remember what the title of your?
Annual report.
There is an annual water quality report that does, that is issued an, every year.
So when's the next one going to be published?
The annual report comes out, obviously annually. It's going to be out shortly. I think you're thinking more of a master plan. Now, this is a much bigger document. We've just reached out for some granting funds to go ahead and have that redone. So you're probably 18 months out from a, another full-blown water master plan.
So annually, 18 months?
Well, no, there's a, there's a water report that comes out annually. Let's argue it's consumer confidence report, tells everybody how we're doing, where we, you know, what kind of parameters are inside the water, what we've done. And then this master plan for the water system is something that's done, it's about every seven years, is, is what the requirement is for that. So we're coming around on that again and that will be a book.
The big one. And then, just second question. When we're in contract with other customers outside the city, are we able to change that contract or is that something that's just done through the city?
There, our contracts are 30-year contracts. So there's, only time that we do have changes in them is if there's a.
Mutual, yeah. Yeah, we're mutual need to change.
30-year contracts?
Some are 40.
They're all in sync?
They've got there, they were.
They're relative.
They're got, they're, they're a lot closer than they used to be. How's that?
When's the next time I can run for council to?
Oh goodness, you'll be older. They just, we just, we finished, finished out. That was something that Paul wanted to do before he was done. He didn't quite make it. We got the ink on the last water contract, so it will be sometime again unless we have a need or one of the customer communities come up to us with a, with the need to talk about changing them.
Okay. All right.
Councilman Copeland. I'm sorry, Councilman Ostag. Then you, Councilman Copeland.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Going back to the, the manufacturing facility, Mr. Manager, that's coming into the area and we're talking, we heard like maybe up to 1,300 jobs. It'll be interesting to see what they are looking for for employment because then we'll know with Delta College right here in downtown with a lot of trade. So thank you for that information, too. And, and while you were talking about that, I thought about, you know, with the downtown development that's coming to the city with the, the College of Medicine and that, that's, even at the time before that was announced, it was like 300 jobs, I think, or 210, 300 new, like over 1,000 with the college. I mean, so there's a lot of jobs coming to this area and a boatload of manufacturing dollars and, and development dollars. I mean, Saginaw has not seen, like for the riverfront, $220 million in development and we haven't seen that in years. So, so thanks for that update on that. But I also, too, want to thank you because I have been to some neighborhood association meetings. I was just at one recently and there were some questions. We had a very spirited conversation once I started to talk about ARPA. And, but by the end of the night, Ms. Brenda and I walked out and we were friends. You got me the information that I needed. She's happy. Thank you, Londa. Because Mayor talked about it tonight. There's a process and we are the front line, first line when things are going on in the city. So thank you again. And again, I do want to make it publicly announced that we talked about the Ojibwe Island marker, the Eshanabi marker that had fallen, had fallen apart. And so, I talked to people, they're happy that we're working on it. Mr. Karwatt, thank you for some of the information that you gave me because I can take that back to them and we can talk about it. Because there was quite a bit of chatter on social media this weekend when they saw that that had fallen apart. So just thank you for, for being responsive when I need you for the citizens.
Let me say this. When he said Brenda, it was not me.
Oh, no, it was Brenda.
I did not walk out of the meeting mad at him.
No, no.
Because he kept saying, "And Brenda."
Yeah.
Not me.
No, she was really thankful. So thank you for all that information for her roof program. Yep.
I said to you, council persons, my fellow council persons, money is coming. We're in a transformation stage. I've been saying that. And this is evident, that Saginaw is evolving. We are now coming out of our cocoon and we are developing into a city where we all want to live, work, and play. I told you all, just hold on, hold on, hold on. The dream is there. Mr. Manager, any other questions for Mr. Manager?
I have one other item that the city attorney passed along related to a question. So the county does have an opioid settlement committee and they have a meeting, it's a public meeting Thursday, March 7th at 3 o'clock at the county building.
Is it open to the public?
Yes, that one's open for public.
I have to ask that. They have meetings during workouts.
3:00 P.M.
Mr. Manager, any more questions for Mr. Manager?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
That takes us to the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SG TV channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
It's been moved as second. Do I have any exceptions? Good job. Oh, where you got to put your head? Yes, Councilwoman? Are there any more exceptions? Any none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Item number five is to approve to increase the blanket purchase orders with specified vendors by 43,000 for a new total of 77,900 for vehicle repair services for the Public Services Department Motor Pool Division. That was Councilmember Sylvia.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you. It's more for information, really. Um, when I looked at some of the, uh, spending just for this year, 24, and I was just wondering like, um, which one was it? It's two qua- two questions I have. Michigan Truck Spring? And I'm just wondering, uh, how did they spend, what did they spend almost their entire budget on?
Yeah, so, um, Michigan Truck Spring is who we use to do a lot of our repairs on our heavier equipment, front-end loaders, excavators. Um, and it's just repairing the, the equipment we have as it goes down. Um, and what it is every year, we can't plan for what's going to happen, so we, you know, we have a set, set amount of dollars, so we try to do our best to set blankets up with these vendors. So, well, you know, once you get to $2,000, we can't keep bringing everything back because I can't, we can't afford to wait a month, six weeks, eight weeks to get some of this stuff back to work. And so, um, and again, we don't know what's going to break from year to year. So last year, I think it says we spent, um, uh, on only $3,000 on services for Michigan Truck Spring. In the current year, we've spent 7,000 already, but we got, you know, four or five more months to go yet. So we're just anticipating there's going to be more work that's going to need to be done. So we want to increase their blanket so we can take some of this equipment over there when it goes down.
Thank you. And the other part, um, is in regards to Guyer's Pennzoil?
Yep.
And it's, and it talks about in our memo about, uh, staff shortages?
Yeah.
But I'm wondering, could those dollars be moved to any one of the other, uh, entities on here that could do those oil changes as opposed to that one? Because it says, one of the reasons is, is, uh, due to, uh, staff shortages.
Yeah, so just so you know, right now, we're down, I think, four mechanics in the motor pool. Um, we had our fleet administrator retire. We have one of our mechanics as acting administrator right now. We posted that job. There's a, then, one of our, so we have two mechanic threes, four mechanic twos, and one mechanic one. Right now, we don't have the mechanic one position filled. We only have two of the mechanic twos filled, so we're vacant two of those. We're vacant one of our mechanic threes because he's acting as the administrator. So we're basically trying to rebuild the motor pool. So a lot of what you're seeing as far as outside repair services right now is due to the shortage in the motor pool as well, so. Um, we, we always used it, but right now there's an increase in it because we, we're down so many mechanics. I mean, right now, everybody's hiring mechanics, it's tough to find good. And in the type of mechanics we have, it isn't just passenger vehicles. I mean, you could be working on a brush chipper, a, a cold patch machine, a $700,000 vac truck. And so the various types of equipment you have to work on is, you have to have a vast amount of knowledge to work on. So a lot of the repair services you're seeing, and one of them was when we lost our mechanic one, they used to do the oil changes and the tire rotations because it's, you don't have, you don't need to have as much knowledge on that. And we reached out to three or four local oil change companies and Guyer's had the best price. I think we're only paying 60 or 65 dollars per oil change.
So now, are these positions posted right now?
Uh, now, right now, what we're trying to do is we want to fill the fleet administrator position, which we did close on that, that, that was posted because we want that individual to be part of, you know, moving forward, you know, whether or not we're going to look at trying to contract some stuff out if it makes more sense financially. Um, but we want that individual to be part of the decisions coming up with whether we're going to, um, you know, add back the mechanics or how, how it's going to work. So that should be done. We're probably going to do interviews either the end of this week or first of next week. Hopefully have that position filled within the next two weeks and then start looking at all the other vacancies.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve, number five. Second?
It's been moved as second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Takes us to board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any boards or commission reports from any councilpersons? Madam Clerk?
On to appointment of board commission and committee members.
I need a motion to approve one and two, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Second?
Do we have any exceptions?
I have a question. Am I, if, I'm looking for the information right quick. Um, it might have been a typo. Says one of the positions, uh, expired this year.
Expired July 20, July 31st, 2024, is that a typo?
No, that is correct. That's what the vacancy is for.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Who, who is the vacancy for?
I'd have to look back and I won't know.
I didn't hear you. What did you say, Councilman Flores?
Who's the vacancy for, for the committee?
You mean, what was the seat? It was for the historical district.
Means there was a vacancy on that commission that somebody left. I just don't remember who it was that was off.
Okay.
For those that want to know what just happened, let me explain it. The seat was up July 24th, July 31st, 2024. We have someone who was temporarily sitting in the seat. And the, the term expires July the 31st, 2024. So when you see short term, that's what that means. It means that they probably got appointed to sit there, so they've got to apply again. I see everybody shaking their head. Now you understand because I was just as confused as they was, so. Did that answer your question, Mr. Councilman Flores?
No, it didn't, but we can proceed. I'll, I'll figure it out later.
Okay. Well, somebody get with him after the meeting next day. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm, there's a motion on the floor. Any more questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
That takes us to resolutions. Um, the first on the agenda this evening is establishing neighborhood enterprise zone covenant one.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second?
No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
The second is establishing neighborhood enterprise zone covenant two.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved as support, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
That takes us to miscellaneous business.
Do we have any motions that we want to put on the floor at this time?
Yes.
Let me in favor pull your mic back. Councilwoman Sylvia, so we can hear you.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you so much. Motion to approve the recommendation for major courts and minors for the allocation of 1,500, no, I'm sorry, 1,005, 1,000, $150,000 for capital and program expenses?
Second?
It's been moved as second, any discussion?
Just for clarification, you said motion to approve the recommendation. Did you mean motion to approve the resolution?
Resolution, I'm sorry, thank you so much.
So there was a correction?
I stand corrected. To approve the resolution.
It's been moved as second. I have a question. Uh, based on the recommendations, it says from, um, you know, who was I saying? They did the workforce. God, I forgot their name that quick.
Guide House?
Guide House. There were some questions and concerns. Have all of these issues been addressed?
As far as I know, they have been addressed, yes.
I'm asking the question because, that's why we've been holding it up, because there were questions and concerns about, about different things. And I'm asking, have, have they been resolved?
When we had our meeting, we went over these, uh, particular issues.
The risks and all that, yes.
So the, the resolutions have been provided to council or is this the, um, similar to all the rest of the ARPA resolutions? And I, I believe that the ones that have been provided, there aren't any additional outstanding issues that we're waiting on Guide House from, so?
Right, yeah, because there's a few more that, uh, we have on hold. So these were the ones that they also approved with us in our meeting.
So this is all capital money?
Not this one.
That, I'm reading the bottom of it. I can read. It's allocated, should be made for capital, equipment, and programming only and not for building purchase. That's the very number four. And I'm asking, has that been addressed? Are they aware that that's what it is?
Yes. Yes, all of this has been addressed.
My biggest concern is we get caught on money. It's a newly established business, not to say that they're not doing the work.
This is not new?
No.
Major court for minors?
Major court for minors is under new management. Yes, it is.
Oh, then, oh, okay, because this is not a new, uh, entity, but, okay.
I'm just asking the question. So I'm going to play devil's advocacy because otherwise we're going to be paying money back and we need to be careful. Okay, so, yes, yes.
I just wanted to clarify, um, is it capital and programming or is it capital or programming? I just think that or programming gives Guide House staff and the organization the flexibility to do what's best for the organization's needs as opposed to mandating that we do either or. So if it's not, if it's and, I'd like to amend it to or. If it's or, then I'm fine with that.
Can you say that again?
Looking at number four.
No, 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 I'm saying.
If it's for, if it's, I want to know if the motion is for capital and programming or capital or programming? Because when you say or programming, it gives Guide House and our staff and the organization the flexibility to decide what is best for the organization instead of mandating it that it be for one or the other or both, if that makes sense.
Looking at number four.
I don't, I don't think we can.
The resolution does provide.
Right.
Or, okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure. I couldn't, I couldn't tell. That's okay, I just, I couldn't tell when she made the motion, whether it was and or, so.
No, it's right here. Number four said and/or.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was the motion.
Any more discussion? Miss, Madam Clerk, can you read the motion again? So that we understand clearly what we're voting for?
The motion, as I understand it, is to allocate in a not-to-exceed amount for major courts for minors in the amount of $150,000 for eligible, eligible, eligible capital or programming expenses.
Okay. Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Well, who's doing it? I don't know.
I, I have them, I guess, and you can split them, it doesn't matter. This is for the Saginaw Fire Department. Um, an allocation of 192,000 for capital purchase of a smokehouse.
Second?
It's been moved as second, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor. Just for clarification, read it again. What the motion is?
To allocate to the City of Saginaw Fire Department 192,000 dollars for capital purchase of a smokehouse.
Okay, call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Flores, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did have a question.
I think I heard him say nay.
I said nay there.
Okay.
But they wasn't recognizing.
So I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Let's go back because we need, do we open it back up for discussion?
You, you just need a roll call vote. Yeah, we just need a roll call vote.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace is absent. Mayor Proton Bench?
Yes.
Councilmember Astash?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Nay.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
You have seven yes, one nay that motion carries.
Uh, the ne- The next one is for Saginaw African Cultural Festival. In the amount of 228,000 for capital expenses.
And again, is, is that to approve a resolution?
The resolution, I didn't know how to do all the language, but this was a resolution.
For every resolution you have.
All I need is a resolution.
Resolution.
It's been moved as second by Mayor Proton Bench. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Resolution for the Old Town Lawn Chair Film Festival. Capital improvements of $75,000.
I'll support that resolution.
It's been moved as second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Resolution for Youth Protection Council in the amount of $100,000 for capital purchase.
One second.
Okay, we got it moved as second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Okay.
Resolution for the Hunger Solutions Center Expansion. Allocated $75,000 for capital.
Second?
It moved as second, any discussion? Yes.
I'll let him make a motion to strike 75,000 and replace with 100,000.
One second, that.
And if we go into discussion, I'll share one.
You do.
You made the motion, can I get to that point?
Oh, you, I got a second.
Okay, so you got your movement and you got your second. Do we go into discussion? Because that table, that counter to act first.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. On the amendment for the 100,000.
Yes, um, my comment is just with the 75,000, I don't want it to be seen as impending on your funds. It was just as a lump sum for that capital project to match. So that's why I just increased it to the 25,000.
So we went from 75 to 100,000? Any, yes, yes, Councilman Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. Is, um, 25,000 additional funds coming from the total ARPA amount that's left over or the interest that was talked about last meeting or where is it coming from?
I can help you with that. That's actually coming from youth dollars.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. So all this money has been budgeted for youth dol-? We have a separate committee for workforce development.
Right.
That's not.
No, it's not touching that.
So the additional 25,000 that is coming in is just?
It's still a part of.
Okay, totally fine then. Okay, great. That's all I had.
Uh, what'd you say?
Andy did. She was asked about the second.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to increase it from 127,500 to 100,000. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Now you take your vote on the main motion as a.
Okay, now we go back to the main motion.
Yep.
It's been moved as second, any discussion? Just vote no. That's how you do that. Just vote no. Vote no, then it's dead. You vote yes and we keep going. Yes, it's time to call for the vote, all those that, that's right. Yes, it's time to call for the vote, all those that, that's right.
You're going to vote on, if you go to a roll call vote, but it's, if you approve it, then it will be, the allocation will be a hundred thousand.
Right.
Yeah, but you don't, that, if vote no, we'll get it.
No, I thought we went back to the original motion of the seventy-five.
Yeah.
So what did we vote for, honey?
You're voting for the allocation to be a hundred thousand dollars. Okay. You voted on the amendment, so that's good, now you have to approve the whole thing.
Okay, so we going back, we approving the whole thing?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? So we did all of that for nothing? Okay, thank you.
We upped the amount. Thank you, everyone.
At the end of the day, we said a hundred thousand, so all I heard was a hundred thousand. Okay, that's okay, that's okay, laughter's good for the soul, okay? Do we have any more?